Good morning, it's December 2nd, 2015. It's now 10:01. Call to order, Mr. Eldon Callen.
Here.
Mr. Ed Hawkins.
Here.
Mr. Tom Bloom. All three of us are here. I ask that we rise for a moment of silent meditation and then a pledge to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would be remiss if I didn't say that we are very honored today. We also have two individuals here, former county commissioners Bob Bell and Azel Kennedy, and hopefully they'll be able to speak at the comments from the public. So I again appreciate you being here. If we could have consents and approvals from the county administrator?
Okay. We only have three donations.
Good.
$939.51, orders of December 2nd, 2015, minutes of the work session and the regular meeting of November 18th. General County Fund vouchers, $237,692.42. General County purchasing card, $2,009.81.50. Cole Severance Fund, $115. Camp Muffley, $499.93. Camp Muffley purchasing card, $80.01. Mason Dixon Park, $140.49. 911 purchasing card, $187.78. 911 cash, $949.91. A total of $242,647.4.
Move for approval.
Second.
The proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Do we have any introduction of any new employees today? No. Okay. Well, moving forward. At this time, we have comments from the public. Anyone who'd like to speak, if they would like to stand up, state your name, address, and feel free to say whatever you'd like.
Bob Bell, 333 Baldwin Street, Morgantown. Azel and I came today to honor Diane. Her last official meeting, I guess, today. And she's been here 40 or 41 years, and she's only 39 years old. But I appreciate working with her. She's been wonderful to work with, and she's so efficient, and we're going to recommend her. Azel and I will sign a letter of recommendation. What a new job. Diane, we appreciate everything you've done for us and everything you've done for the camp, and thank you so very much.
Thank you for that. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay. Moving quickly forward from the comments from the public. We now have, Renetta, do we have any sort of grants?
Just one.
Just one?
We have the final reimbursement request for the emergency solutions grant through the Office of Economic Opportunity. This is for RDVIC and Connecting Link for the 2014 funding year. Final total, $7,009,121. That's all I have today.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Okay. Moving quickly forward, we're up to Sheena Hunt. And feel free to come on down, it's very informal, and given us a Region 6 update report.
Good morning, Commissioner. How are you?
Morning.
How are you, Mr. Callen?
Okay.
That's good. Good to see you too. I'm here for Region 6 Plan Development Council. Mr. Hawkins came to our last council meeting, so I'm assuming you're going to be the representation for our board, okay? Just wanted to let the council, or excuse me, the commission know that the council has basically retired Jim Hall. He's left. He officially retired November the 15th, and I applied for the position and am now the interim director on a six-month probationary period, so I hope it works out for me.
Yeah.
As well as the council. I hope they're happy. But I know there were some questions raised at our last council meeting as to, you know, what do we do for the counties or municipalities that pay dues into Region 6? So I just wanted to kind of enlighten you that, you know, we are here to help all of our counties and municipalities in our region in that we provide services for labor compliance. It doesn't necessarily have to be for our projects. We can go outside of our project, that we can help you for labor compliance if you have a contract with somebody or anybody in the county. We also have an acquisition specialist that if you have a project that needs rights away acquired for it, we are here to help you assist you with that. We also have done numerous projects over the years. I couldn't really write down all of them that we have done for Mon County. But just in the past few years, we've done Canyon Road PSD. We're working on Clay Patel Water. We're actually working on Decker's Creek for sewer project. We did Fairview Water, which was across county lines. We were working with Greater Pawpaw, even though it's in Marion County, that they had approached Mon County for some assistance, and unfortunately that didn't work out, but we are working with them to wrap their project up. We are currently working with River Road. We put an application in for them for small cities. That didn't pan out because the income was too high for that project, but we end up doing an income survey, basically at no cost, to the PSD other than mailing. We didn't charge for time, and we had to survey over 800 people to determine what the income was for that area. And then I know that past employees have worked on Scotts Run Sewer in multiple phases. So I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up that we do that. We've also have worked on some participation grants at no cost for the entities that have applied. Typically, they either come through a municipality or county, so, you know, we try to work with that and help them getting the application in, the painting to do drawdowns, that type of thing. We've done a lot of review letters for applications that have come into our office that needs a state clearinghouse letter, so we do multiple, multiple projects and doing clearinghouse letters. So just wanted to kind of let you know that, you know, there's new faces there. We've actually hired a new accountant. She just came on board in September. Unfortunately, we're losing Lydia Ingram. If you've met Lydia, she is moving on to further her schooling and nursing, so we're losing her at the end of the year, but we hope to get that position filled by the end of the year before she leaves, so we get somebody trained. And she is actually our labor compliance officer and project specialist, but we hope to get somebody. We got a couple of people that applied, and both of them seem to be fairly qualified to do that. So just one.
How many do you have on staff?
Right now, we have five.
Five?
Yes. One's part-time, the labor compliance officer will coming on probably as part-time, and then three full-time.
I'm trying to remember.
Yes. So, you know, Lee Wolf, which you're probably familiar with, excuse me, she is officially retired as of the end of the year too, so.
Oh, she's retired too?
Yes.
Well, congratulations.
Okay. So I just want to kind of just get in touch with you, put a face and name together, so if you have any questions, you know who to call. I'll be glad to do what I can to help out in any way. If I don't have an answer to something, I'll do my best to get you an answer, but we definitely want to serve the people that are part of our board and make up our region, because we want to see the whole region along with Mon County being successful in all their projects. And if you don't mind, I've got some brochures that I may leave and some business cards.
Right.
Okay.
Do you have any questions for me?
Nothing right now.
No, I attend the meeting.
Okay. Just a reminder, we do have our meeting next week, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we will see you there. Again, call if you ever need anything.
Welcome, thank you, and wish you the best of luck.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay. Do we have any correspondence?
No.
Do you have any correspondence?
Yeah. There's something I got here that's important that I need to read from the state of West Virginia, Earl Ray Tomlin, Governor. Whereas Diane de Medici, Montague County Administrator, will retire on December 31st, 2015, after nearly 41 years of outstanding and meritorious service to the Montague County Commission; and whereas Diane de Medici began her career with the county commission on February 2, 1975, as a secretary; and whereas Diane de Medici has faithfully served for 16 different commissioners during her tenure as county administrator; and whereas Diane de Medici must be commended for her unwavering professionalism and dedication to the commission and citizens of Montague County; and whereas Diane de Medici has been a loyal friend and mentor to her coworkers and will continue to be an admired citizen of the community; and whereas Diane de Medici is highly respected among her peers and her dedication and commitment to community and career has set an outstanding example to all. Now therefore I, Earl Ray Tomlin, Governor of the great state of West Virginia, do hereby bestow upon Diane de Medici this certificate of recognition, given under my hand and the great seal of the state of West Virginia the second day of December in the year of our Lord, 2015, Earl Ray Tomlin, Governor. Come up here, please. I can't say anything more. You're just fantastic. We'll miss you.
Want to get a, here, come on in here, we'll get a picture. A rose between three thorns. I think we got Bob's going to do one too. Okay.
Oh, there's no film now. Why don't we have Bob and Azel come up here?
Yeah, Bob and Azel.
One of them will join us for another picture.
That's a great idea.
Why do we think commissioners left?
You killed Bob.
You killed, I was going to say.
Like the light ones.
Great deal.
No, no.
Outlived a few commissioners.
There we go.
Okay, we got a dartboard now. No, that'll go on every county.
Thank you.
County residents' dartboards. Thank you for coming down. Okay, so we have no other correspondence. We'll move towards unfinished business, Veterans Parade. One of the, I was fortunate to represent the county commission at the Veterans Parade and also the ceremony, and out of that, a number of people discussed, and I asked and the county commissioners agreed, if we could write a letter. It would go to the VFW in Westover, I found out, that we would consider moving the parade back from 6 o'clock to around 10-ish, so then we'd have the parade and then everyone would come right to the ceremony, and it would mean more. So again, we can make the recommendation to see if they would consider that. So that is what is in front of us right now, but we would need a motion to have that letter written.
Move to send the letter requesting the change.
A second.
The proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Work session procedures. I had asked for this to be put back on the agenda. You know, I wasn't there, which is fine when this was voted, but I held off because I wanted you to see, with the work session, I mean, our concept was to give general information, and they did a great job. In fact, they almost got every word. It's as long as our regular meeting. As I looked at it and thought about it, I wanted to throw out this as an option. Would we, could we consider separating the work session from the administrative reports? Because they're two separate issues. And that way, we have the person here contacting, writing what's going on in the work session, which I think is important for the public. The administrative report is also open meeting, but it isn't specifically copied, and that's what I would like to consider. I cannot make that motion, but I'd like to discuss it, and that's why I put it on this agenda.
I feel that that's an important part of the work session personally.
Well, it's important.
I really don't, I mean, I really don't support it. I, you know, I stand, I've watched two work sessions. We've sat through them. I have not seen any inhibition by anybody that was, you know, was being here, being interviewed, or those who are giving the reports.
And to explain why I see it a little bit different, I think every business or government has to hear, I believe, and I wasn't here, but when you had work sessions, it was basically more not work sessions, it was actually administrative reports and people coming and speaking, department heads, what was going on. And I really think there is a major difference between discussion of running a county with an administrative report and having a work session. So I would like to separate the two. Again, that's how I feel.
Well, there's definitely a distinction. The reality is work sessions was to allow people to come in to present different requests and ideas and needs. It wasn't to replace the interaction with the commission and their employees and staff. Too many times, the administrative reports involve discussions as to work performance and work accomplishments, and oftentimes, we violate the, by putting this in the minutes, we would violate a lot of stuff that should be, that should remain confidential because it's personnel-related. And that does not belong, that does not belong in the minutes.
Well, my point is, I think that if it should be discussed, it should be discussed in executive session rather than, I think the violation of the discussion, I mean, that is a violation as far as I'm concerned. That's why I think that it keeps, you know, it keeps a, you know, a fair honesty about what is discussed and, you know, and what is reported on.
You're talking about disciplinary. I'm talking about just overall performance and advice to the staff. That is something entirely different.
No, that's just how I feel.
It's just, but it's just entirely different. There's no logic, there's no logic to it.
I understand what you're saying, Eddie. You're right. Any of those issues would go under executive session, but I agree with Eldon. When we're talking about administrative reports and we're talking specifically, sometimes you can say "more" when you're talking in how to run a organization, a business or a government, and there are actual reports that I don't believe need to be part of a thorough minute-taking, which is what's going on. And again, the law and the rules are very clear. We all, you know, we're going to the extreme now. So I think we had very little, we have the extreme. I'd like to go some compromise.
There's absolutely nothing, and if you read the open meeting laws, which I've read in the past, I was, got tied up this morning with vehicle problems, so I couldn't be prepared for this. But work sessions do not require minutes.
Right.
I mean, it's become foolish. We were clearly in the realm of the statute as the way it was written. Clearly. Now, we're just going to a level of stupidity that I think is silly. Now, do we want to have open information? Yes, we do have open information. But the statute makes it clear that there's no requirement for minutes in a work session, none whatsoever. Work sessions are identified in the open meeting laws. I don't have any problem with having minutes or a record of what, when different groups come in, like a PSC or PSD, or someone comes in or has this particular request or some other organization. But it should be a topical minutes. So-and-so came in, they talked about this. But it shouldn't be a word-for-word minutes, because they're supposed to be informal. Work session is supposed to be able to, you're supposed to be able to talk to someone, they can, they could come up with an idea, or they could say something. I mean, you play devil's advocate at times. I know I do. I don't, it has no meaning or significance to it whatsoever, other than to try to get someone's brain kicking in a different direction. That's what you do. You say things to get people, get people thinking in a different direction. How about we go here? How about we go there? The administrators, many times, they're asking us questions like, well, I would like, I'd like to do this, but this might be a good idea, or how about this, or what about, well, that prevents them to be totally open, and it's certainly nothing that belongs in minutes.
Right. So what up?
Here's my, here's my dilemma right now.
Okay.
My dilemma right now is that I believe that the way it is set up is totally in violation of the open meeting laws, totally in the personnel and confidentiality issues, that it's totally in violation of those things. However, I don't know how to fix it. I need to study it some more. So what I would, I think everyone knows my inclination, we need to fix this. It's not right the way it's being done. Word-for-word minutes of the work session is a waste of time and county money, and it certainly squashes people's free interaction. And so I would move that we table this at this time, until which time we bring it back off the table. We can examine exactly what we have to do to comply with the law, but also encourage open dialect and communications from all the staff, employees, other elected officials. Those conversations are important. If we don't do it in work session, what happens? It all ends up in the back room. It's all done secretly instead of out here. And it belongs out here in a work session, not necessarily on TV or in minutes. But like I say, I don't know where to draw the line, so I'm hard-pressed to come up with a motion at this time, other than to table it until I can examine it some more.
You want a second? I'll second, I'll second it this time, only to say that I believe we need to look at this rather quickly. I'm just concerned about the efficiency of the county and administration.
I agree.
But there is a motion, a second. Did you want to say anything?
Well, my only discussion is there is no fee to the county to do this, okay? That statement should be entered, okay?
Okay. All those in favor of the motion to table, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, it's tabled at this time. Rental contract, go.
To clarify, are we not having someone to do work sessions from now?
We're just, we're just leaving it the way it is right now.
We're doing as is.
There's no work session today, but next week you'll have.
Yeah, yeah. We'll just leave it the way it is right now, swear I can figure out where the line should be, but there should be, there needs to be a line.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, rental contracts. Did you want to discuss them?
Last week, we had Lori Huestead from Camp Muffley come in. She presented a reservation contract and rental rates. This is actually Mason Dixon Historical Park from Rachel. This is something that, if you'd like to adopt for all three parks, then they'll all have a standard application for rentals.
Move to approve the contract for all three parks.
Second, they're very well-penned.
Yes. Proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Hotel motel tax. Basically, the county commission has been informed that there's some hotels, and specifically one hotel, that is delinquent more than one year, but two years, and concern came up, and I had asked the sheriff and the chief deputy tax department to be here to talk about these concerns. We did send letters out, we have been sending letters out to the one place. Do you have that paragraph that you, I'd like you to read into the record? That was informed us, because we are trying to take action. Go ahead.
The letter, in the letter that we sent to the hotel?
Yes.
Which will identify it?
Yes.
The payment of $97,387.26 for the period of March through December 2014 is due and payable in full immediately. These are taxes collected specifically according to our hotel motel tax ordinance. Use of this tax for any other purpose is not permitted, therefore the taxes collected should have been in a separate account and ready to be remitted as required. So we've given them 10 days to respond. The letter that we sent was received by them on November 23rd, so actually the 10 days would be Monday.
Okay, it is Monday. We have not heard anything, and for clarification, I mean, because I know the three county commissioners are very concerned about, before we try and spend any funds, we need to make sure we have the funds in hand. And the concern, and I have to bring it up, was that the specific hotel is, again, clearly two years behind, and then I was concerned when the Sunday paper says quote-unquote that the Ramada Inn and Conference Center had a complete overhaul that's taken place during the past year, yet we have been unable to collect the hotel motel tax, which everyone has already paid because it's done separately. So with that, I had asked you all to come in, and could you give us a general synopsis of what has happened with all the hotel motels that we need to deal with and the procedure and what the law is, where we're at right now?
We are prepared to do so.
Thank you. And I appreciate you being here. And the object is to try and collect the funds as quickly as possible.
The first report I'm giving you is the monthly report.
Thank you.
Who has paid up-to-date, the blank boxes are the agencies that haven't paid. Here, let me get this original, I'll take that one back.
Okay, thank you.
The blank boxes are the agencies that haven't paid, and there are three right now. Ramada Inn is one of them, who is in arrears more than anybody else. Morgantown Motel and Camp Muffley. Those three ended, have not paid. This report on the top is actually the guide that we were given back when we started collecting hotel motel taxes. In this guide, I think one of the things that we probably, well, no, one of the things we've gotten away from is on the second, I'm sorry, on page one, under how the county receives the tax, I think that at some point before my administration, before your all's administration, there was apparently some agreement with somebody that I was not made aware of, and obviously you all weren't either, that it was the county commission that would send out letters if somebody was in arrears and things like that. If you look at where it says how the county receives the taxes, the last sentence says the sheriff is the county's agent and administration, for administration and collection of the tax. So how it got to the county commission to send out letters saying you owe this tax, that's really the responsibility of the tax department to do that.
Great.
And that's the way it should have been done, and I think that's what we need to do, because that's what the code sets, to make it legal. So, I mean, sending the letters and everything is fine, and if they abide by them, that's even better. But the fact of the matter is that the code does say that it's the sheriff's responsibility and the tax department to collect if somebody's in arrears. The hotel motel report, Commissioner Bloom had asked for a report for the last five years. We were able to pull the last four years. And what you'll see there is all the areas, all the months marked with a Y, those are months that have been paid. All the months that are marked with an N are the months that have not been paid for the agency that you see on that report, and that goes back four years. The other thing that we did, just from your information and our information, I know there was a question a while back, maybe a week or so ago in one of the meetings, about Ramada Inn had requested to be put on a payment plan. So what Kelly did was send an email to Ora Ash with the auditor's office to ask if there were any provisions in place that we could authorize partial payment of hotel motel tax. And Ora sent back a copy of the code that covers it with his opinion, and he said, his opinion is, or his answer is, I don't see any provision for such an agreement. So these are, the reports are supposed to be filed the 15th of every preceding month in which the taxes are due. The hotel and motels are responsible for getting together their report of occupancy and what their percentage is of taxes that they're supposed to pay to the county, and that report along with their payment is supposed to be received by the 15th of every preceding month. So that has not happened with some of these folks, and what we need to do, especially with the one that is, most of these are, you'll see on that report, maybe a month, maybe a two in arrears, but they've always been paid. Some of these have been that way over a period of years, but they've always been paid. They don't go more than two or three months in arrears, and they pay them. I think, my opinion is, that what we ought to do is send a letter from the sheriff and treasurer to all these agencies, all these hotels and motels, remind them, and even give them a copy of the code, that this is when your reports are due.
Yes. That's a great idea.
And this is when your payments are due. If you don't abide by this code, it's very specific in, I'll get the number here, in 71810 of the West Virginia Code, what the provision- Code, what the provisions are, what the stipulations are about what they're supposed to do, when they're supposed to do it, and what can happen to them if they don't. And I think along with that letter and a copy of the guide, that we send a copy of that code to all of them and tell them they need to, whoever does it, if it's a CFO or whoever it is in their company, they need to make them aware of what the code is, and they need to abide by it, and they need to know what the ramifications are if they don't.
Sheriff, what about new hotels? Have you, have you, just taking those down?
Have we brought, picking them up?
Yeah, like, so you're aware.
Yeah, that was my question. I don't see any, I don't see any additions since two thousand and twelve.
Right.
Is there any communication from the assessor's offices and tax offices to those kind of things, additional tax issues?
No, because we've never done it before. It's always been the county commission that's done that, and there haven't been any new hotels that are not within city limits. We only collect from those that are, are not within the municipality.
In the county.
And Camp Muffley got added to the list, so that is, that is a new one.
There were one out there behind the new CVS.
Pine Drive, it's, I don't think it's open.
It's not open yet.
It's not open, okay. That's it, that's the only one, I know outside in the county right now that's close to being open.
Whenever new ones do come into the county, then the assessor's office would then assess them, then we would have that information, and then it would be added to the list. Once they're added to the list, they would be sent the same information. Anything else coming in?
Well, I think it's pretty clear by statute, this is the way, way to go. I don't know if there's anything for us to do, other than to say, here, here.
Get the money.
Go, go for it.
We do have an issue though with, with the one hotel that's two years behind, and we did, and, and we did put in the letter that we made you aware that they have ten days, and we were requesting, I believe in the letter, the ninety-seven thousand dollars immediately, and then to meet with you, and now it's clear that there is no such thing as a payment plan, you know, and the concern is that, you know, this is money that goes to recreation, this is money that goes to C V B half and us half, and, you know, this is something that we need to address, and I appreciate it, but we need them to pay their, they're collecting the money. And that's what, what concerns me. They've already collected it.
I did have one question.
Sure.
I didn't read the letter in its entirety.
Sure.
Where did the ninety-seven thousand come from?
That was from March of two thousand fourteen to December of two thousand fourteen. Now, they still owe from January.
Do they submit that, a report to you, is what I'm asking? How do we know that that's what is?
Oh, the, yes, those reports, they sent those, but no money.
I understand.
We'll get those in, but no check.
I see. Okay.
So that's why, that's the concern we're now having, and so we're talking, you know, almost a quarter of a million dollars, and we need to get that rectified. The concern being that we want to make sure, and we appreciate, we want to work together, we want the public to know that one of the major concerns we're saying is if we're looking at either increasing levy rates or decreasing services, are we collecting the funds that are coming in? And you, you're doing a great job. We just got to make sure those individuals that aren't paying are going to have to pay, and that, that's a substantial amount of money. And I don't underst, you know, I, I don't understand because it's collected separately already when you pay your room rent. You know, you pay that extra percent.
I mean, it's not that hard to understand. They didn't pay it. So we got to go find out why they didn't pay it.
I think probably as, as an addition to the information we'll already send to all of them to let them know, this is the procedure that you need to follow now.
Yes.
I'll also ask Phil Megron to draft a letter.
Okay.
To send to the ones that are in arrears and tell them this needs to be paid, or you leave us no option but to take civil action.
That's, that's, that's it, that's true.
Okay. I, I, I'm fortunate that we have to do that, but I think, you know, we have, you know, we, we need to make it clear. I think these three county commissioners are clear that, you know, we want them, everyone to pay their fair share.
So does sheriff, sure.
Yes, and sheriff, I should put both. I apologize for that. Yes. And now we have it worked out. Okay, so that sounds good.
Anything else on this?
No.
Okay.
Thank you very much for that report.
You're welcome.
I believe, were you also going to give a report concerning, I don't know if it, sure, the shooting? I didn't know if, I didn't know if you were, yeah, if you didn't, because this would be the time under unfinished business. Last time, you know, we had an individual speak, and we didn't have all the specifics. We tried to explain to them that there is no zoning. That's been there for, what, five years? And we asked if you could just follow up.
Yeah, we've been using the facility for about five years. Five different departments in the county actually use the range now, which is about two hundred and twenty-five officers. So there is a lot of activity up there. I believe what Mr. Yakupovich was speaking of as far as the shooting in the evenings, were required by the state to load light fire, night fire. Each officer has to do that at least once a year at a minimum. Most of the departments, in order so we're not there late at night, we generally have to wait until the end of summer, getting into fall when the days get shorter, and then the time changes. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to get people out there to even begin until nine o'clock at night.
Thirty, ten.
So in the last two months, there has been a lot of activity because you've had over two hundred officers getting their night fire training in.
Okay.
So that's going to explain a lot of that.
Right. How long does it take for one person to qualify?
Uh, each department has their own standards as far as what they do on the range. We have our set one, but we have seventy-eight officers that we run through.
Ken, my, my question is.
It takes a couple of weeks.
My question is, you got, you got one officer qualifying at a time, or do you have more than one qualifying at a time?
And, like, we do one at a time because we actually have a course that they have to go through.
And then how long does it take to go through the course?
Two minutes, but we have seventy-eight people to do, and it takes us, we have to schedule about two weeks of the evenings, just to get our department.
I was trying, I was trying to calculate. You'd have to probably spend at least two hours a night, two weeks.
Yeah, generally so, yeah.
That's what I was trying to calculate. So the, for a two-week period, it's almost no way you can avoid a couple hours.
That makes sense what's going on.
And most of the time, it's the, the late night firing, or at least up until nine or nine-thirty, is going to be down to a few months when all the departments are trying to get that requirement in for the state. But we do have, of course, a SWAT team, and two other departments have the equivalent of a SWAT team, and we do train in the evening sometimes out of necessity for gear. That is not nearly as frequent, but, but it does happen. So, but we've always had people, when they do schedule the range through us, ten o'clock has been the maximum time. And at least up until this point, this is the first issue that we've run into that I'm aware of.
Right.
So you're not going out there at three or four in the morning and waking everyone up in the middle of the day?
Better not.
In fact, from what I understood him saying, I think nine, nine-thirty was the latest. It was just the early evening dark, and I guess it just happened so much.
And that's due to that night fire requirement.
Okay, that, and I'm glad, okay.
Were there any other questions that he brought up?
No, that was basically the, the question, yeah.
And I did speak with him.
Oh, good. I appreciate that.
Friday, prior to him coming in on Wednesday about that.
Okay, well, I appreciate it. We just wanted to clarify it since.
Just got another one not to cook my shoe fly.
Yes. Do we have?
Out there, belligerent, you play where you live, we're all in trouble.
Is there any other unfinished business? Okay, moving to new business, appointment to boards and authorities?
All these were advertised on our website. These are the ones that have agreed to continue to serve.
I, I will make the statement, since Eldon was not here, that we did interview three independent candidates. We had three individuals who all applied for the Clay Patel Public Service District. They were all excellent candidates.
Yes.
It's, it's my personal feeling that I feel and would make the motion that Joanne Brooks be the person selected from the three to the Clay Patel Water Board. The others, I believe, are all reappointments, are they not? Yeah.
Well, I'll second specifically that one since we did the interview. There's a, a proper motion in the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we have, these are reappointments. Did you want to, do we need to read each one, or?
I, I have, I have no problem making a motion to approve all, all the remaining ones.
I will second that motion.
Okay, mo, motion and second to appoint all these, the listed below. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Great.
Governor's authority has any two other appointments that they can have.
Can have.
The board, there are a couple individuals interested. If you'd like to call this in for interviews, but other than that, everything should be caught up on the board.
Great.
Okay. Good. Okay, is there any other new business? No? Okay, seeing none, we'll move, are there any reports from any elected officials, or anyone who would like to speak?
The only thing I have is in a couple weeks, I'll be going to Charleston for the governor's intergovernmental speakers meeting at the Capitol, so that's two o'clock on the fourteenth, so we'll see what additional items come out of that, but they're always interested, as Eldon notes.
That's also the time when we have the Mon County group is going to go down to the legislature, January fourteenth, so you'll be down there at that.
December fourteenth.
Oh, December fourteenth, okay, in January, so hopefully you might be able to go with us on that date. Reports from county commissioners?
Today's paper reports a promise by Republic Services, since they have been mission, mentioned and commissioned before, for improved service in the city. I can only hope that they would consider a recycling program for the county at the same time and improve the services. That would be a great improvement. December tenth, there will be a League of Women Voters Forum. They are sponsoring this with our state legislatures. That's December tenth from seven to nine at Suncrest United Methodist Church. Lastly, I was instructed not to be sappy or anything else, but I would like to thank Diane for the guidance that she has shown me in my year that I have served as a county commissioner. That's it. Not sappy.
Thank you. Eldon, your turn.
I'd just like to say that after five years, it's going to be difficult coming in and not seeing your smiling face. You were always my sunshine. Even, even when you were mad at me, you were my sunshine. But, no, you never got mad at me. I, I just made that up, so, yeah, my fingers cracked. But it's, it's gonna, we're going to miss you a lot, but I, I really commend you for stepping into a new part of your life where you can explore all kinds of new avenues. You've been a great asset, as the governor pointed out, to, to Monague County, as I know you will continue to be. We'll miss you, but you have our phone numbers. Please stay in touch.
I'm changing mine, so.
Yes. That's all. Okay, first of all, I do want to inform the western end of the county. I know one of the concerns has been the wall sanitation property, and supposedly after two years and eleven months of, of court and trying to work things out, on December fifth, it is supposedly by court order going to be cleaned up. I look forward to seeing, going out there on December sixth to see what has happened, and we'll move forward on that, but hopefully we will be get that cleaned up. Second thing, before I say my goodbyes, one of the concerns we do have to deal with is now that she is leaving on Friday and will not be here, we need some form of a person or interim, or we have to do something because someone's going to have to approve the invoices, prepare the agendas, the vouchers. Do we, how do you want to?
I move to appoint Renetta as the interim administrator of the county.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that we have an interim until we choose a full-time person. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I appreciate that. And finally, yes, on behalf of all the three commissioners, I've, I've been here, you know, three years, and I, I cannot say enough about you being my voice in my head or conscience of when I get a little too passionate, or get a little out of control, which, you know, that never happens, but you're always there to make, to bring, to bring me back to what is most important, and I think what you have proven and said to the three of us is that the constituents and the people we serve and the people who are in this building and in the building down at the Justice Center are, are the key reasons why we are here, and I'd like to end this by saying that I can only imagine and want to thank you for where we first were when you first started, where we are now, and where we are heading, and this could not have been done without you. So on behalf of all three of us, we want to say thank you, and I know all three of us are envious as you go to the beach, and we look at the weather here, knowing what's happening, and we, you know, all I ask is you do not send us a picture from there. But again, on behalf of us and the community, a, and also the state, we want to thank you for everything you've done for us, and we wish you the best in the future. Thank you very much. So with that, I ask for.
We should at least give her a chance for.
Oh, did you want to say, okay, yeah, you're right.
Give her a chance.
I know.
Give you a chance.
Chance, is there anything you want to say?
It's been a long journey. Good days, bad days, but I'm happy.
Great. And you, you haven't lost your smile, and we appreciate that. So with that, on behalf of the group, do we have a motion for?
Let's do it.
Second.
Proper move in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, and before we, I click it, everyone still invited, two o'clock today upstairs, from two to four o'clock. Thank you. Media adjourned.